Six o'clock.
Here we go.
Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I call the meeting to order.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its form.
Do I hear a motion to put us into executive session?
I.
You can do it.
I move that the select board vote to enter into executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21.3, with respect to collective bargaining if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body, and the chair so declares. Teamsters Union Local DPW, and pursuant to Mass General Law 214, Section 1B, and Mass General Law, Chapter 4, Section 7, Clause 220, 26C, to discuss financial assistance to residents in need. Roll call, vote.
I'll second. Maureen Dornell, aye.
That's I'm a si.
Laura Habbay, unanimous?
Okay.
Yes, and when we're finished, the board will return to open session. So I'd like to resume our regular meeting, running slightly late. Thank you all for waiting patiently.
Looked good.
So. Does that mean that we will be on 3B, am I correct, Road Street Bridge? Dennis, you're up.
I'm up. Up the rest of the night.
You are. Space include your need.
So I will try, we're going to be talking about quite a few subjects, topics. I'm going to try to condense this so I can just get to the important stuff and get to your questions if you have any. I didn't think I was going to have as much of an update for the Road Street Bridge in my memo. You'll see, but I do have one. So let's talk about Road Street Bridge. As you know, where we left off, we were getting to the 100% design. We were talking about the permitting. We knew that we were going to have to do Chapter 91, and that was going to take us. We experienced this with Fowler, and this this cost us more money, and it sent us out. I think it cost us about eight months or so. So we were anticipating some hiccups with the bridge. In addition to that, we ran into a Verizon duck bag, which has five fiber optic chambers in it. During our plan, we thought we knew where it was, and we discovered we were wrong, and so was Verizon. So we did some test pits to locate it, and we know where it is now. And in the design, because of its location, it appears as though we're going to have to lower it. Otherwise, it won't meet the requirements that Verizon has for the depth, because the grid, the approach to the bridge lowers slightly than the new design. So working with Verizon, we have a little more investigation that we have to do. We have to actually go in with Verizon and do more formal test pits that identify the exact locations, the beginning and the end, and we get elevations on that so we can incorporate that into the design. Because this is a change in the design, of course, we have to go back to Chapter 85 and Chapter 91 and make amendments to those two permits. That's the bad news. It's out of the way. It comes the good news. We're still going to build this bridge. We are at 100% design minus this modification. We are anticipating to have a Mass Law Chapter 85 review done by November 29th of this year. We anticipate having our Chapter 91 in hand and approved by February 25th of next year. So just, we're still in winter. We knew when we went into winter shutdown, that's when we want to bid it, because we want construction in spring. The last thing we have is the Amicore's approval, and we anticipate that at the same time as the Chapter 91. So we think we'll have, we believe we'll have all of our permits in hand in February, which will mean we will bid this out. Oh, I'm sorry. We already have our notice of intent and our owner conditions through conservation. So we're going to advertise, we're anticipating to advertise March 5th. Put it out to bid. Open the bids April 2nd, and the contractor will be by April 11th. And that puts us back.
That's nice.
Questions?
Will we give questions now? Brett?
Design?
Design.
Yeah, we're going to see it. We'll see it.
Oh, I'll bring it to you. I'm sorry.
All right. Great.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Look forward to seeing it.
We talked about it, so I think we got it all right.
I think you did too.
I'd be shocked if you didn't.
I'd be shocked if you didn't.
Next.
MS4. So every year we do our annual stormwater report. This year is a little different, and for the board, I wanted to show you what a stormwater report looks like. So this is from 2021, and the reason why I have the 2021 here is because this is the last year that I did it hard copy. After this, I did them all electronic, because this is a bit much. But that's what our stormwater reports look like. There's an awful lot there. This year, part of our annual MS4 includes, through the EPA's requirement, we have a salt management plan, which includes a salt reduction plan. For the most part, we follow industry standards for managing our salt roadway salt. We use a calibration method, kind of old school, but still used where we weigh out the salt dispensing from the trucks for a given amount of time at a given speed, so we know how much we're putting on the road. And we go from 150 pounds to 300 pounds per million miles, which is industry standards. That's what everybody uses. So our practices are in line and correct. What the rule does require for us that we don't have is actually a regulatory mechanism, that a policy, if you will, that's adopted by the town, either through the Board of Selectmen or a town meeting. So this is something I will have to put together for the spring annual. Unless KP and our engineers think that we could do it just through a policy like the policy. Might be possible. But at worst case scenario, we'll have to put a policy together that goes in front of town meeting in the spring, just so we adopt it and say, these are the rules we follow. It will require me to reach out to all the local businesses and establishments annually and remind them of what we are expecting their contractors to be doing for de-icing materials, things of that nature. It's, 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 it doesn't have teeth, but it has promises that show the EPA that we are reaching up. They know we can't police every single contractor out there, but they want us, they want to show that we're we're trying to communicate with them and educate them on the policy. That is the biggest change from our MS4. Otherwise, it is pretty much the catch basin cleaning. We did 903 catch basins this year. We cleaned, we swept a little over 70 miles of road, about 200 cubic yards of material collected. It's the same as it typically is every single year with very little changes. Questions?
This is just the, this is all the road drainage sewer systems. This isn't anything to do with sort of sewer and the sewer and water system. Nothing to do with wastewater.
All.
All just drainage, and those two things are, they're always separate systems. We don't have any stormwater going into our wastewater system and vice versa there. An infiltration. Okay. Never heard of those quotes. Great. Thank you.
I basically provided that just so you had an idea of the amount of reporting that we do annually that were required. Every year we do that.
So next would be the execution of Crockett Road Sewer Eastman.
From Falls, previous town meeting, we presented the taxpayers with a article that authorized both to grant permanent easement for the installation of a Title V connection between two properties on opposite sides of a public way. That was unanimously granted, I believe, at the town meeting. And so the property was on hold for a while, which is why everything stayed quiet. It has recently sold. And the new, the new owner has hired a contractor, and they have been into, in my office to discuss the next steps. And the next steps are the board entering into this agreement and authorizing this easement, then after which we can put a recordable document together and report it.
Okay. Any comments, Maureen?
No.
Brett?
Nope, I'm good. Well, fast. I, I can make a motion. I move that the select board vote to execute the Crockett Road Sewer Eastman as authorized by Article 2, November 1st, 2022, special town meeting.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous? E. Request for sewer system operation and maintenance plan articles.
We recently received a sanitary sewer system inspection. In the board's packet is a copy of the inspection report. And it was performed at awful worst times possible. Only had two employees running the plant at the time as a vacation illness, family medical leave situations, and a vacancy. I was down to just four hours the day that it was inspected. So obviously, in the report that is reflected, there are some items that are noted in here. A great deal of it falls within our capital plan, and they noted that it's in our capital plan and recognize that it's stuff that we already have in the works. You can see that on number three, as they go through A, B, C, D, E, F, and G. You can see where they note included in CIP. So they're aware that the majority of the stuff we've already identified, and we have a plan, which is what they're most interested to be corrected.
For members of the board, that letter is under Agenda 6D, sanitary survey discussion in flow and preparation.
Okay.
So you're looking for that. It's later on when that discussion item comes up. Matt, Dennis, take this home with me.
So one of the things, there are some deliverables in here that are important. And the board also has a copy of my response to the DEP, where I basically identified some of the issued resolutions and asked for some increased time for two in particular. So one of their, one of their items of deliverables in there was ongoing with the INI. And we already have the next phase of the INI. It's in your packet. It's like this. And this is being delivered before, I think, next week or the week after. So before the September 30th date that they put in the letter, this is going to them. And it shows that we've done the smoke testing. We've done all the things that we promised to do, and we're onward and upward to the stage. So that will satisfy that. Tapping plan has already been addressed. They are insistent upon a full-time, seven full-time employees. And when we have one vacancy that's empty, when that's filled, and my current superintendent position that's vacant, filled, will be up to seven full-time employees in the water, wastewater division with the clerical staff. Who's the clerical? And I made sure that I told them, six people in the plant and one clerk. That's in my office. I made sure that the DEP was awarded. They accepted. They also accepted the extension that I requested, giving us time, because two of the deliverables include an update to our O and M. So our operators, operation and maintenance manual, which is last updated in 1999. It's a booklet about the same size as that for the wastewater treatment plant only, and they're asking for us to update them. And we can't, but not before December 30th, because it's going to require some appropriation, which means I need town meeting action. That's one of the two articles that I'm asking the board for. The second one is what's called a CMOM, which is a capital management, operation, and maintenance. In every city and town in the town of Massachusetts that has a wastewater treatment plan is required to conduct such. I did one for the town of Plymouth before I left there. It took three years and cost $5 million. But here's the good news. It's not going to be any way near that for us. One, we're a tenth of the size, basically, and a lot of the work has been done. So when we had our assessment, our, our, our complete assessment done of the system four, five years ago, a lot of that is going to be the benchmark for going forward with this rule. It needs to be updated, and it needs to expand past that. So an O and M will do the plan, and the CMOM takes that, makes up the core part of the document, and then surrounds it with all of the infrastructure in the town, all the pump stations, all of the finances, all of the capital improvement plans. It puts everything together in one bid package. That's the second one. And I actually think we probably could combine those two into one article, because I'm going to recommend that they come out of retained earnings so that they have no impact on the rate payer or the taxpayer. And we have ample money to do it. I don't have the exact amount right now. But I'll, I'd be really surprised if it was over 150,000 for both. Then we have roughly a million dollars in retained earnings in wastewater.
And you think that's, is that an article we can get on for November?
Yes.
So what, within the, with the amounts? Yes, the board will be able to, even though the warrant closes on Friday, up until basically the beginning of October, the board at any meeting can reopen the warrant to insert that language, which is why, in this case, because he has that, as we proposed to this article.
Comments, anyone? Do I hear a motion? To be on, you put sewer operation and maintenance.
Yes.
I move that the select board vote to support the sewer system operation and maintenance plan article as proposed by the DPW director.
Second motion?
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous?
Are we doing the CMOM separate? Is that included? I have them both together. Okay.
So now we're actually at town manager report.
So I'm going to be quick, because very often my reports include updates on stuff that Dennis is providing an update on. So just want to remind the community that on Thursday is a informational session about the Community Choice Power Program. This is something that was launched a couple of weeks ago. It's going to be at 7:00 PM at the community center, and representatives from Colonial Power will be there at 12% information. The, the, the board's aware that on, on Thursday, the town was awarded one grant in the amount of 1,002, $126,402 to cover the town's conversion of streetlights to LED. The town will be responsible for a $3,796 match, and we have an article for town meeting on that. So I'd like to thank Bill Taylor, as well as other members of the Green Community Committee for their work on that. We're basically having 97% of the cost covered by the grant and incentives coming from national credit. I've been working with staff to finalize articles, making sure to get supportive information. And just a reminder, the deadline is this Friday. Also, beginning of September is the start of our FY26 capital budget process. I've asked department heads to submit proposed projects and review prior items that are on a spreadsheet for accuracy. I just want to remind the board that with board's authorization, I did follow through and applied through the Community Compact Best Management Program and application for funding to cover updating our capital plan. And lastly, on Thursday, I'm going to be attending a Lexington Valley Chamber of Commerce educational breakfast. This is, it's going to be focusing on creating local, regional educational partnerships, support for STEM, and workforce training.
Do we have any public input? Oh, thank you.
It can take five minutes of your time.
Slowly.
As I talk about a grant program that was just opened by Conservation Services called the Forest Resources Grant. And one of the neat things about it is it prevents communities to sell conservation restrictions of land. It's, as long as that land is not otherwise protected by our protection. So Forest Heights happens to be a candidate for this grant. So I wanted to bring that to your attention. It is the intention of the Open Space and Committee and Conservation Commission to present something to you at your next meeting with a hell of a lot more detail than my act is giving you. It's a, I think, a fantastic opportunity to take advantage of some state money to help conserve some land that the town currently has under corporate ownership, under the control of the Slidewalk. Do you have any questions?
Yes, where is Forest Heights?
Oh, I'm sorry. Forest Heights is 107 acres located on Road Street.
Okay.
It does have frontage on North Street of about 160 feet. Most of the land is located behind these steep homes there.
I know where it is now. That's where I thought it was, but, for example, when we did the Christian Hill paperwork, I realized there was a street that I had never heard of before that attaches to Christian Hill. It's a driveway.
Tax taking in 2016. And it was, oh, I'm sorry, 2016 is when the care custody control was given to the Board of Selectmen at town meeting. So it is under your control at this point. Lot of work to be done, but they announced the event at the end of August, and the applications will due September 27th. And so there's a lot of details we have to get through. It's entirely possible that we may come to you and at the next meeting and say it's just too much for us to pull together this time. But we're kind of hoping that, because it is a lot of effort to pull, pull together, that if we do pull it together, there'll be, it'll be in a situation where there's fewer people competing.
Makes sense.
Right? So I just wanted to let you know that we're working on that and hope to present something to you next meeting.
Appreciate it. Appreciate the heads up.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Does anyone else who's on perhaps Zoom, do you have any comments? Seeing none? Any board members like to bring anything up? We can anticipate? Hey, we're frozen. Okay, next. Dennis, it's you again. Christian Hill Traffic Report.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So the, the board has in their packet, the Christian Hill Road Traffic Study that is performed by Time Bond. This was a very comprehensive analysis of the current traffic patterns and accounts associated with Christian Hill Road. Section 5-1 of that report includes recommendations based on the data collected in the street options. It's my recommendation that we follow the recommendations of Time Bond and the traffic engineer, and specifically in installing double yellow lines, which is unfortunately what I have to do for a centerline marking. I can't do single lines because they're not legal. And also installing additional signs that form to the manual control devices and speed feedback rate up sign. So we know what these are, because we just installed some recently around town. So they let people know as they're driving what speed they're driving at, and if they should slow down. Funding will be the big perk of that one, but I know that the police chief was working on additional grants for those signs. So we can utilize that if we're successful and put in signs up on Christian Hill for that. But that is the Christian Hill Traffic Study.
I appreciate that. I do think that double yellow line is going to be tremendous, because, as I've mentioned to you before, the new cars make you stay in your lane. They all have lane keeping. And either the steering wheel shakes, or it actually pulls you over. And I think people will realize how fast they're going when their car starts acting up. I just wish we could do it on more of nights like that. My arbitrary comment. Thank you. That was a lot of work. If anybody watching this, the Christian Hill, the full report is in our package online if you're interested. Morning, Joe, Maureen, Brett, sorry. Any questions, comments? You good, Brett?
Anything we can do is going to help.
I think so. I think the residents will be happy, because I do think that's really going to draw attention to how fast people are going. Because right now, they think it's a one-lane road and they fly. Fisk Gap reconstruction project.
Can't believe I put out that. I did.
I'm sure you can.
So we are at the, we're at the completed design phase of Fisk Gap. We ran into our old Fisk Gap as we, remember, we are a complete streets town. So it is, we have to attempt to satisfy complete streets rules every time we reconstruct a roadway. This requires shared loose lanes, bike lanes, pedestrian crosswalks, sidewalks that meet, maybe in compliance of five feet wide and down to four feet at certain passing areas, but that's it. So in doing so, we realized that the roadway would not be able to maintain its width without going outside of the right of way in a couple of locations. And in doing, if we were to follow that, we would have to do, we would have to have appraisals done. We'd have to go to town meeting appropriate funds. The board knows the process. We did it with the tip. We did it with the pump station. It's a lot of work. It would push us out a whole year before we could get that road finished. So we elected to take a different stance, and we redesigned the whole roadway so that it conforms within the right of way. We meet our complete streets requirements, but we had a lot of hurdles, and we focused mainly on public safety. Want to keep the speeds down on that street. We focus on trying to maintain as many trees as we can, opposite of a power line. So if you're going up the hill with a school on your left, you'll notice that the trees along those front yards are right on the road. So it was very difficult to be able to design that project and maintain as many of those trees as we could. And some of them, we just can't. Some of them are stressing and going to die anyway, because they're too close to the road. So in the new plan, we have a planting plan where we're going to try to put some new trees in certain areas to make up for the ones we're taking down. Drainage was one of our biggest hurdles. We, we had to actually change the elevation at the very top of the hill, where I'm, where I'm going to call it Fisk Lake is. That's the big pond that they have up there. And so in order to make that work, we had to increase drainage, and we had to change the elevation of the roadway. We are adding granite curbing and concrete sidewalks. So this is a really beautiful looking reconstruction. We are also adding the crosswalks at the school that have the bollards and have the flashing, just like in front of Dunkin' Donuts, just past Dunkin' Donuts. So we're incorporating that to this plan as well. And I think that is the highlights. We are on track to have a bid out the end of October, and award at the beginning of November. If we have a favorable winter like we've had the last three, that means we will probably get the drainage this winter. And then keep going after that. If it snows like New England does sometimes, it would push us off until early, early spring or late winter before construction really got swinging. But our goal is to get up there and get the shovel in the ground this year.
Nice. That would make everyone happy, especially the draining of Fisk Lake.
And, and keep in mind, this is both Fisk Gap North and South.
Exactly.
Say, you mentioned Fisk Gap North and the trees there. What about trees on Fisk Gap South?
I don't think we really have any, any issues.
There's enough from there.
Yes. There's been some residents who have voiced their concern about maintaining the grass strip that's there. Bill's taken some calls for folks that would like to see that maintained and take a look at that and see if we can incorporate that into the design. Because keep in mind, we're changing the sidewalks so that they meet, so that's pretty tight. Asphalt thin.
If you get a photograph.
Yeah. That's, that's what they would like to see there, and that's what's there.
Yeah.
The, the main part of this, we're reconstructing the entire road now that the water line has been replaced, but we're not changing. This isn't a box widening, and we're trying not to change the, you know, with, with exception of some elevations. We're trying to keep the road exactly where it is, as much as possible.
Appreciate it. Next is discussion of Blanket Crockett Road easement area.
So back to the Crockett Road, there are, there is, there was another house that is going to be looking in the very near future to install, if they haven't already, a well on the other side. They own on both sides of the property as most of those houses do. And to maintain the 100-foot buffer between their septic and their well, they're looking to put their well on the other side. They're going to be looking for an easement to cross that road. Since then, another resident has come forward and indicated that they'll be looking to put a garage on the other side. And they too want to put waterline across it and electric. And there are already one crossing on that road that did it many, many years ago and there isn't an easement for it. So speaking with the town manager, he directed me to town council to get some advice on the best way to handle this. Town council said it's not something that's very important, but when you're only considering one road, we could draft an article that allowed town meeting to authorize the board to go going forward without future town meeting authorizations to address all of these issues. And that's what you have in your packet is from KP Law. It's an article that basically would allow this board to consider future easements for utilities, including electric, water, wastewater.
I, I understand the need for this because of course, sitting on the Board of Health, you know, most houses are right on the lake and there's all sorts of requirements for setbacks and everything else on the lakes. And I personally, if their septic has to go across the road, as long as they own both parcels and will own both parcels in perpetuity, we're not creating new parcels. I would be in favor of that because I do think, you know, most of those houses are old. Most of those were just summer cottages and now they're year round and pretty soon the whole road will be done, you know?
And it's specific, just, we don't find this situation anywhere else in town, which is, I think, why KP Law was amenable to putting something together because it was just for this one road. So we're not really opening up a can of worms.
How many houses out there that are on both sides of?
Off the top of my head, we don't.
Is there a lot of?
Actually, I looked at that. Say there's probably 20, 30.
Really?
Yeah. I mean, it's, it's, there's a certain point at Crockett Road where all of the homes above that have parcels on either side.
On either side.
So it was a bigger number than I.
It's, it's the vast majority of the street, am I right? That most?
Yeah, there's, like I said, there's a point at which every house has probably a new sign. My recollection, I can't remember if I was looking at them. There's at least one.
Yeah, it's got, you know, if you have a failed septic or a failed well and you have to do it, it is onerous to wait till town.
Keep in mind, it still leaves the authority within the board. It just gives you the luxury of not having to go back to town. It saves time. So if someone bought a house and they have a failed septic that needs to get done in a certain amount of time while the house is going to be unlivable, they may not be able to wait for town meeting.
Right.
Kind of they can't sell it or I mean.
Yeah, and then, and then it becomes a bigger, to me, it becomes an environmental hazard because if you, if you've got a failed septic right on the lake, you know, and it's not like you can go somewhere else. If you have a mortgage, you need to live in your house.
Obviously, I support it, which is why I brought it to you.
Do you have any questions? Any further questions?
I don't have any questions.
Do I hear a motion?
Moved that the select board vote to place the article entitled Conveyance of Easements of Crockett Road for Utilities as drafted by town council on the special town meeting, Lauren.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous? Sanitary survey discussion inflow and infiltration. I and I.
I and I.
I think, yeah, I think we discussed it already. So we're, we're getting ready to review our next phases. But we have, you have a copy in your packet of what the, the last survey and evaluation and the last testing that we did. And I believe it even alludes to the next steps that we're going to be looking at in here. So feel free to, some light reading.
Actually, I read most of it. Does anyone have any further questions? No, not me.
I support it.
Do I hear a motion?
I'm, select board vote to support the sanitary survey inflow and infiltration as presented by the DPW Director.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous? The Hero Veterans Property Tax Exemptions.
I'm sorry.
Dennis, you're done.
Thank you.
Want to keep that? You could just turn it back into.
I would love to. Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
So it's just when you lose five votes documents. Hi Val, how are you? Have a seat.
Thank you. I wasn't able to get this in time for the packets, but these are the, the presentation person.
Nice, thank you.
So, floor is yours. Thank you. The HERO Act is an act honoring and empowering and recognizing our service members and veterans. So the new municipal tax provision is session 23. It has two new.
I want to eat this. This is good.
Two new veteran property tax exemption clauses to General Law 59 subsection file. It's clause 22I and 22J. If accepted, it would be effective July 1st, 2025, this will be your 2026. Clause 22I would increase the amount of tax exemption granted to veterans on their domiciles under clause 22, 22A, 22B, 22C, and 22E, and 22F annually by a cost of your, the whole determined by the Department of Revenue based on the principal precedence. This would work like the annual cola adjustment determined by DLR. It's already a local option for certain senior exemption amounts and financial means standards. We do have that for our senior exemption clause 1C. This year, the cola is 3.2%. The Department of Revenue publishes that every year. Clause 22J, if accepted, provides an existing, excuse me, an additional exemption up to 100% of the amount of the tax exemption granted to veterans on their domiciles under clause 22, 22A, 22B, 22C, 22E, and 22F. This would work like the optional additional exemption that's already a local option under General Law 59 subsection five and a half C. Upton has not voted in five and a half C. It would not apply if you had voted in five and a half C. It's an option for cities and towns that don't use the general additional exemption to be able to grant for one person, to just grant one for persons granted veteran exemptions. It, that's a huge exemption, 22J. The gist of this is that it's the whole amount. And we have four veteran spouses that receive the full amount right now. And this would increase it to all the veterans that we have. We, there is a chart in this packet and currently in that chart, we all. We have 13 veterans that have 100% disability that receive a $1,000 exemption. And we have 32 veterans that receive a $400 exemption. This would increase it for all of those veterans to 100%. Currently, we are reimbursed from the state 820 dollars per veteran for the clause 22E, the $1,000 exemption. And we received, we're reimbursed $225 for the $400 exemption clause. So that would be, clause 22J would be a tremendous weight on our overlay. So it is only one domicile, one house. If it was a multi-family, it would only be 50%. And if it was a three family, it'd be 33%. It's, you can't be greater than a three family. And it, we wouldn't get reimbursed. We'd only get reimbursed the standard $225 if it was clause 22. We'd only get reimbursed $225 if it's clause 22E. So if we voted in clause 22J, we wouldn't be bringing us all the money. And then the next section is about motor vehicle excise. And currently, the medical advisory board within the RIV determines that the veteran has the disability is based on the disability determination by the VA, which is what their letter is for their other clauses. But just brings it in line, which is great. And because that would allow an exemption for, with the VA letter, additional money they could be exempted from on one motor vehicle. And we are reimbursed for that. I did include a chart on what the whole increases and it's $32 for the $1,000 exemption, which is 22 week and it's $12.80 for the whole exemption. So the impact on the overlay isn't as great as it would be if it was 100% exemption. And it, I don't have any feedback from any additional towns on this yet of who, what they were thinking. But it appears with my peer group that people are leaning toward the cola. And, and that's on it. And the, the, it would, the 22J is a full exemption. It, it can't be greater than what is, what they would, they would be listing the $5,000 tax here. It would be a $5,000 exemption.
So if we, if we vote to implement 22J, they basically, their property taxes are free.
No, no, no.
No. Thank you. Yes, please. I got, I got a little lost. If you can explain this, Pat, please, because I know we'll get questions.
The, Val.
Yes.
My, my understanding and my, and my peer group and, and the, and the call that I was on again today with the, with the Secretary of, of Veterans Affairs is, is that we could raise it from, I'm talking specifically to Upton, from 1,000 to 2,000 and from 400 to 800 or any amount less than that. It does not go to full exemption. It goes from 1,000 to 2,000. And there is no additional reimbursement from the state for any amount above the current 400 or 1,000. And, and if you have something different, Val, please advise.
That's correct. You are correct. That is correct. That is what the plan says. And it does allow it for any amount, but up, and up to 100%. So we could do 1,000, we could do 2,000, or we could do the.
Yeah.
Yes. We would not be.
So I apologize to whomever on the board there spoke, but you know, the answer is no. We, we have four current people who are receiving 100, receiving full exemption. We, we're not increasing that number. That would not increase that number if you, if you took it. Let me just go on forward here, okay? Because I, I did spend some time with Joe. If I put on my veteran hat, I, I go, yeah, let's give them everything that we can, but I can't do that. You know, I'm the chairman of the finance committee in Sutton and I well understand the finances of towns here. And my recommendation is that you consider the cola. Because I, you, I, I'm not that intimate on everything that you're doing in Upton, but I'm well aware enough of, 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 you know, the school and all the other stuff that you're doing. And I think the really big thing for 100 percenters is the, 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 the excise tax on one vehicle, which is 100% reimbursed by the, by the state. So I think we have a lot to talk about and a lot to be very proud of that we are representing veterans.
Yes.
Beth, do you have a question?
I have a lot of questions.
Other than she are forward leaning towards the cola, cola. Okay, and would the cola take the 1,000 and raise it to 2,000?
No.
No.
No, it'd be 3.2%.
$32. The cola would raise the thousand, $32. This all excludes, I didn't include Community Preservation Act. That's in proportion with it, so. But it's a separate line and so that's why I didn't include it. We're reimbursed that as a separate way from the Department of Revenue.
Okay.
But if we increased it from 1,000 to 2,000, we would not be reimbursed for that extra thousand.
Correct. That's correct. It's still on the $820 for a veteran.
And there's roughly 45 veterans in town, am I correct?
Correct. Yes.
Well, there's more than that. There, there's only 45 receiving some exemption off their property tax.
Yes.
Okay. And, and those are, it's like a needs base that's financial based or?
It's based on disability from the, that veterans. So you have to have your letter with percentage of disability from the VA and it states it.
Your questions?
So what are we changing and what are we changing something from to?
So we would be changing.
Just to clarify, like separate and all that things. So I just want to try and.
So we would be changing, if we adopted the cola, we would be changing the exemption from $1,000 for the full 100% veterans to 1,032. That's what the cola is right now. And for the $400 exemption veterans, it would be $412.80. And if, and we would be still reimbursed from the state, $825 for each $1,000 veteran and $225 for each $400 veteran. If we increase it to, from 1,000 to 2,000, we'd still only get reimbursed $825. And if we increase the $400 exemption to 1,000, we'd only receive $225 for, for reimbursement.
And that comes out of our.
Yeah.
And that, and Val, the other thing that's consistent is this is consistent with what you're doing with, you know, people, people who do the work offs and the, in the elderly where you have a cola already built in. So the town is being very consistent. Now they're doing this with the veterans.
That's correct. Yes, we do do this with those other exemption groups.
And, and if I can, and I apologize, I apologize for not being there. I really do. But the, the, the other thing is, is in Sutton, we're not going to take this up until the May town meeting. And, and I, and what I'm hearing is, is other towns are doing the same thing because in most towns, the warrant is already closed.
Is there an analysis of what the cost would be if we went instead of the thousand, I mean, I'm sure you did it right. We were recommending increasing it by $32 and $12.80. If we increased it with 100% disability from 1,000 to 2,000 and for the 10 to 99% disability from 400 to 1,000, did you do an assessment of what the cost of that would be versus what we're recommending?
Just a correction, it's 400 to 800.
Thank you, Pat. It's 400 to 800. I, I do have some analysis for this. I would be good. Yes.
We have to increase the overlay though, because we still have to have room for abatements and all of that. A real estate person property and access.
So one of the reasons why I wanted to bring this in front of the board, one, because it was recent legislation that was signed by the governor. So like the effective date is, is in November. So you may start hearing about it from residents or other people around the. I did, I did talk with, with Pat and also.
I did, um, I did talk with, um, with Pat and also because this does then have a budgetary impact. And there's a lot of things here. Um, I was thinking that this is really A F Y twenty-six budget discussion as well as, um, town, um, meeting. More an article, annual town meeting, more an article discussion, because there is a lot of information out there. We have to be able to, uh, uh, this, your head does spin around a little bit hearing all these different sections and exemptions. Um, but fully understand how then we can identify what is good for our, uh, resident veterans, but then also fully understand the, the financial impact and making sure that, that we don't create other problems, especially as we build out F Y twenty-six. And I, am I interpreting this correctly? If I look at this last page of fiscal year twenty twenty-five, thirteen veterans have a hundred percent disability rating. The overlay is thirteen thousand dollars. The state reimburses eight twenty-five, so that would be ten thousand seven twenty-five that the state would reimburse us. So that would then be two thousand two hundred and seventy-five dollars out of our overlay. Is that, are those the kind of numbers we're talking about here?
Yes.
Twenty-two hundred dollars is what it would cost taxpayers?
Yeah.
And then on the other side, it would cost five thousand six hundred dollars? And that's where some of these things are, is information. We're just learning as we're talking to peer communities. And as Pat said, joining in calls, this is, um, how exactly this gets implemented and all the details. It's, it's happening fairly quickly. Um, yeah, if, if the board wanted to try to accommodate things within the current fiscal year, we have a month of September because the board can, um, open up the warrant to insert things. Um, we just want to give the board as far as this is hot off the presses sort of, uh, initial analysis. And as you can see, there's a little bit more refinement that needs to go into fully understand how things are impacted. Granted, the total impact is not, we're not dealing with six figure numbers either.
No, no.
So I'd like to see the, you know, the statistics Brett asked for and kind of shake it all down. So we have kind of an exact number and an exact impact. If we can make it for November, we will. But, um, you know, I understand it's very fluid. It's very new. And, you know, I don't want to shoot ourselves in the foot. I don't want to shoot any vet in the foot either. I want to make sure we understand all ramifications. So.
I understand.
No, please, Bill.
So basically you're doubling if you, uh, the, uh, cliche. Uh, right. So the increase to the overlay would be thirteen thousand plus the twelve thousand, twenty-five thousand, eighty-five dollars. We'd be doubling all of this. And you're not getting any more money back. You're getting the same amount that you get today. So that you're, you're doubling your, since you've adopted the doubling, you're going to be actually just thirteen thousand dollars, twelve thousand, twenty-five dollars. And if you apply it, then thirteen times the, uh, all of them, thirty-two times the total amount for the four hundred dollars. That is about seven hundred dollars, seven hundred dollars. But basically you're going from, basically, I think I would say eight hundred, sorry, it's either eight hundred dollars or twenty-five thousand.
How much should we appropriate every year for you?
Um, uh, a hundred thousand, we, a hundred thousand dollars for exemptions and a hundred thousand dollars for abatements. So about two hundred thousand dollars total. And we typically are slightly less than that every year.
Do we have a great amount of abatements? I know there's nothing we can do about the exemption.
Yeah, they, yes. So we had about the same amount of abatements twenty twenty, yeah, officially in twenty twenty-three and, um, fiscally of twenty twenty-four and maybe the same amount this year. It's always about fifty, fifty, sixty thousand, fifty, sixty thousand. And the exemptions are always a little bit greater. So it's about seventy to eighty thousand in exemptions.
So if we accepted twenty-two J, that's going to be another twenty-five thousand.
Yes. And the cola is a lot less. And it's in line with our other exemptions that have the cola. Is there other exemptions at the cola? This one doesn't. It's a seven. We're just making system of that.
That's all I have.
Okay.
Personally, I'd like to delve into this a little deeper before we make a decision. We get as much information as we can. It sounds like it's coming in from all sides, to both you and Pat.
Yes.
And like I said, before we make a decision, um, it would be nice to get it on for November, but if we can, we can always put a placeholder. And if we can't, we'll go for annual. When we have all of our facts together and hard numbers and I'm somebody that needs to see numbers on papers because I, there is, I, 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 I can do money. I can't do math. So if I can see it in front of me, it becomes money.
Spreadsheets.
Aren't you? You're pretty good at spreadsheets.
I have lots of.
Just what you need, one.
So you, you, you can now delegate.
Partner.
Yes.
Yes.
Exactly. Madam Chairman, this is Pat. I, 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 I heard your question and I'll work with Val and we'll redo the, uh, the packet and, and get it to you ASAP. I think which will, which will answer all of your questions. And I'll also give you some feedback from what other towns are doing.
That would be wonderful, Pat. I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Okay. And again, I apologize for not being in, being there in person.
That's okay. We see you. We appreciate it.
Okay. All right. Bye.
Thank you. Bye-bye. Thank you, Bill. Thank you for coming. I appreciate it. Thank you, Bill. Even though I did just tell you. I told somebody today I was a total nerd and love to do research and they were like, whatever makes us happy. So, um, requests for, can, um, discontinuance of Stoddard Street portion. So tough one.
And your, in your, uh, packet is, I mean, now from attorney represent the owners of, uh, twelve Stoddard Street, um, twelve Stoddard Street Realty Trust. Uh, and you'll see a plot plan where there is, that's very interesting. Uh, sort of carve out of the right of way to the front steps of twelve Stoddard. Uh, they are requesting that essentially, if you imagine closing this rectangle off, uh, that that portion be discontinued, uh, in Stoddard Street. Uh, talking with D P W, uh, we don't really understand why it was done. There clearly is some sort of historical reason. Uh, but from an infrastructure standpoint, there's no reason for having this rectangle at someone's front steps.
Yes.
Um, uh, and there's no drainage. There's no, nothing. We, you drive by and, and the edge of payment is straight. Uh, so, uh, but for this house, it does actually, um, have a big impact. Uh, so, uh, working with town council, uh, we've done a couple of things and I've included this information in your packet. Uh, one is the board actually does have to vote to forward this request on to the planning board. Assuming the board was going to do that, I've already submitted the, the, uh, materials to Mike Lance now so we can, uh, start scheduling it. Because the window for special town meeting and, um, uh, there's forty-five day calendar, which really is if the planning board does not act, um, within forty-five days, um, then, you know, it's sort of constructively approved. Um, but we are able to close that window, uh, to make sure that things come from a town meeting. Uh, and, uh, I've already sort of inserted article language that basically identifies this, this portion. So according to town council, um, we have to first, and this is what's in the motion, uh, forward that off to the, the planning board, then at a subsequent meeting, we'll then vote to, um, actually support of their recommendation if it comes back positive, uh, for being on the board. I don't know if you have any questions?
Anyone? Questions? Comments?
I don't know. Hang on, let's say, are you?
Me neither. I can't see any use for, except to drive the homeowner's bananas. Do I hear a motion?
Yeah.
Yeah. You want to?
Scrolling.
I got it. Do you want me to?
Yeah, go ahead. Got it.
I moved at the select board vote its intention to discontinue a portion of Stoddard Street being an approximately sixteen feet by sixty-one foot castle of land in front of twelve Stoddard Street as a public way, as shown on the attached sketch plan. And that the select board award the sketch plan to the planning board for its comments and recommendations pursuant to general law, chapter forty-one, subsection eighty-one G and eighty-one. Eleven?
Second motion?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. And I think it may be eighty-one.
Aye.
It does look like eight eleven.
It does.
Okay, we do draft special town meeting articles.
So, um, in your board's packet was draft two, it's a draft for the, um, dollar figures. And so I just wanted to give, uh, revenue things for.
Okay.
As we, as we discussed, uh, and the topic for executive session, uh, we are finalizing, uh, negotiations with the collective bargaining, uh, units for D P W. Uh, so that article is a placeholder. We will, once we have the final dollar figure, uh, I'll put it on the boards. Uh, I anticipate September seventeenth agenda to then vote in that dollar amount and change that language. Uh, we are also, uh, for article two, this is the same thing, but with the comp and class study. Uh, I pushed that off to the seventeenth because we're having individual sit downs with departments. And then we're having a department meeting next Tuesday. So wanted to discuss that with, with them individually. Have the questions before all of a sudden it's all discussed on tape in front of meetings. Um, so we're gonna.
You've already made all the changes that you were going to go back and go over, right?
We're, um, meeting with individual staff so they can ask the questions, um, how they're impacted and all that. Because some of it is really, uh, dependent on sort of like our existing policy and procedures manual of how step increases happening. So we want to make sure we give people staff some time. Uh, article three, uh, this dollar amount reflects the town's portion. This is for conversion of streetlights to L E D. Article four, uh, if the board, um, they were talking, Chief Browning was in front of the board. He mentioned how, uh, we were successful in receiving a four hundred and thirty-nine thousand, four hundred and sixty-five dollar grant, uh, E nine one, uh, one grant. However, it was not for the full amount requested. The full amount was five hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars. Uh, but this is a very important infrastructure project and, um, he asked that we consider an article uh, funding the remaining one hundred and fourteen thousand, five hundred and eighty-two dollars uh, for that product that involves repeaters, uh, uh, on two sites, Pearl Street Water Tank as well as Oakdale, as well as various other, um, radio equipment and dispatch equipment. Uh, I do have in a subsequent memo, I'm going to submit to the board all the backup information. So you see the quote for all the equipment so that you as well as finance have all that stuff together. Uh, article five, the C O A has asked that a article for, uh, purchase of a minivan be placed on the warrant. Uh, one of the reasons is that we're basically driving a very inefficient bus, so the long distance for single lock trips. It is our intent to apply to the community transit grant program to cover eighty percent of that cost that, uh, it indicates, um, is open in the fall. Last year it opened around October twentieth. So we may not hear for town meeting, um, but C O A, and I've recently received a memo that, um, they, they voted to support this even without the grant, uh, because we weren't here on the bus as well as, um, inefficiencies. Uh, so that's, that's a request.
One question.
Yeah.
Do we have a firm price on this van?
Yes.
Like the bus?
No, this is a firm price. It's actually through the grant program itself. Um, and, uh, a number of towns last year did receive the grant, including some of our adjacent towns. So I think the likelihood of getting that is fairly high.
Is this a, uh, handicap accessible?
Yes.
Wheelchair then?
Yep. It, it, it can accommodate up to three wheelchips.
Beautiful.
Uh, the next article, I have, uh, final numbers for the community message, uh, board. Uh, that vote came in at forty-seven thousand, three hundred and forty-seven. Uh, back over the summer when, when men's, uh, group came in, we had a discussion. They expressed willingness to, uh, participate and maybe giving a donation to reduce that down. I don't have this in here because I don't know what they're going to give. Um, but if the board wanted to proceed, uh, with this, then I was going to make a formal request uh, for, uh, a donation to help offset that. So I anticipate this would be closer to the thirty K range. And this is for a new one. I figure we can have the discussion about refurbishment versus new. Uh, refurbishment is basically using the existing structure, sort of restoring it, fixing it. Um, versus a new that maybe mirrors the aesthetic that was within the Upton Center visioning project that, um, had more like a historic feel. And that might be something we can then also tie in for another article as far as trying to enhance that tip product. Comes through like the, the black fixture, like, um, fixture lightings that we showed you from Milburgh when Mike Antonos was here. So this at least is the bigger option. We can then take time to identify and, and reduce down. If we went with the refurbishment, it drops this down instead of forty-seven, it drops it down to thirty-four. So not a significant cost of things, but it's the cost savings just still, so. By having, by having this in, we can always reduce and, um, decide as we go through the next month, um, what we finally want to do, especially depending on that's what.
Personally, I think we should just go new. I mean, once again, I think we're going penny wise and kind of foolish. Cause if we just rehab something, it's like living, I live in a two hundred and fifty year old house. You know, you think you're just going to change the door handle. The next thing you know, it's not. It's a lot more. And I'm, I'm worried that's what would happen, you know, because the sign's been there twenty, thirty, forty years.
It's been.
I thought it was two thousand, but I I deferred on some of you.
Oh, it was brand new when I first came here. Two thousand.
I have a, a, a related but slightly different concern, which is sort of the, the impact of putting an L E D lit sign in the center of our town that we're thinking about making historic and beautifying downtown and creating a nice aesthetic and putting in planters and nice streetlights. It occurs to me that we could manage that potentially by having some standards and agreement around how we use the sign, the time of day we use the sign, when it turns on, when it turns off. You could even literally just, we could have a rule that says, yeah, it's an L E D sign, but we're not trying to make it a video screen. We're going to make it so that it literally looks like a white background with black letters that has announcements.
It's like a Kindle paper, white versus.
You, it, it, that's all. So it's like a digital version of the one that's out there as opposed to one with fireworks and sparkles and bright lights and it looks like Vegas. That's my concern. Downtown Whitemanville, just black with white lettering, especially at night where you can control the glare, all that. Hundred percent in agreement. Um, while it is, while all these are capable, um, while I, I can appreciate maybe B B T sign for our purposes. It basically is replicating, it's replicating the letters.
Yeah.
And that's where the board has control over that. So you set the standard of what that is.
Yeah.
And everyone else.
I, 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 I would agree with you on that, Brett. And, you know, but we do, we all say it every time we have any type of a meeting. How do we get information, right? You know, you can only put so much on those big L E D signs. And if we. You know, you can only put so much on those big LED signs and if we take some of those big signs down, you know, this would be much more attractive, even though it was LED.
I agree. And with some of, some of the other images and video, we then do run into, uh, appliance issues with Arizona by law as well. So, so I think a lot of people are right where you're thinking. Uh, the next one, um, article seven for, for parking. I'm still working on an estimate, but in talking to Dennis, uh, our plan may be to have a placeholder. He thinks most of this work can be done under our existing paving contract and that we were not changing elevations of drain structures. Yeah, some of the work was really with the sidewalk and he's like, he's gonna be looking at things, but he thinks we can just do it within our existing budgets now. Yeah. To remove, that's easy. Yeah. We may need to, the, the sidewalk that comes around, that may be a, a later phase, but we don't need that on the backside of or on the stream side. We don't need that right. Yeah. So focus on the parking lot and then the ADA, uh, redoing the ADA spots here and that may be it. So I have this as a placeholder knowing that, um, there's a better chance we're just gonna pull this and then do the work internal. Great. So article eight is what Dennis talked to you about having, um, uh, operation maintenance plans for, uh, that should be waste water facilities, like that. Um, and I'm, he's gonna be submitting that language later on this week, uh, before the, the new deadline. Uh, again, any tinkering, we can open back up the warrant.
Spell maintenance, right? So, it's okay. Oh, just, just, we'll fix that too.
Sometimes that's where, where like, well, we're rushing through, but words, sometimes when it's all capitalized, it's like it, it doesn't know what to do anymore. Cause I just saw service, I just saw it design services in the next one. So, um, that's why it's draft. Um, on the next one, this is something that we talked at the last meeting and I did get, and I'm waiting under the quotas wall to basically, um, check the prices. Um, if we want to go forward and look at how we can enhance that tip projects specifically in Upton Center, introduce, um, period light, introducing scan, uh, streetscape, you know, like benches, planters, other sort of ways of, of updefying the tip project, which is very bland. That's a trans, for them, this is one forty and they're sort of treating it as such, yes, we get around about, but there's no design aesthetic that's really part of that. This would allow us to retain an engineering, uh, engineering services to, uh, design lighting, streetscape, um, some of which may end up being covered by Mastod, but they basically said, we're not doing the engineering to figure out what you like. This takes it from not only conceptual design all the way through construction management when the project gets forward. So I could reduce this down. Um, shoot, sorry. I meant to give you this. This is the scope of work and it just came in this afternoon, um, from Stan Tech. And identifies on second, third page, what is covered by that work? And yeah, again, we could divide this up, um, so that the project management, you know, that could be funded in, in out years. Um, but this would basically cover from conceptual all the way through construction, trying to do, um, uh, some of the enhancement type war like in Milbury Center, uh, like in Rockington, but not Rockington. Uh, to, to, to really reinforce, like this is part of that destination. I mean, we, some of our design that we're doing with the Grove Street riff was partly on reinforcing as a wable center and that's why this is all to be.
Yeah, and I think if there's benches and pedestrian lighting and flowers, it's gonna be more, it's gonna be more attractive to watch.
Yeah.
Any, uh, I don't know of a better time to ask this question, so I'll just throw it in there now. Um, the conversation with National Grid on utilities, I don't see anything in the.
So, this is, and I'll just review the email that, um, I had, uh, this morning with them.
And the, the reason I, part, the part, one of the reasons I bring it up is we asked for twenty-five thousand dollars to do a study about that and it was one of the most controversial things that brought up in years. And now we're gonna go ask for a hundred and twelve thousand dollars to do a landscape design. And so I just want to make sure that we're anticipating the type of feedback and discussion we might have on town meeting floor. And someone might say, hey, we gave you twenty-five thousand dollars five months ago. What did you do with that?
Exactly.
If we come back and say, well, nothing, then it's not the best look.
So I had last heard from National Grid on the twenty-first and I asked them this morning for an update. Um, and the response, uh, was, uh, good morning, Joe. As earlier mentioned, my manager is looking to move this job over to our external design group due to scale of the project. We have had pushback, uh, since there isn't a job scope, uh, from you that betrays exactly what needs to be done. He reached out again on Thursday to find a workaround around this. I will reach out to him tomorrow for updates since he is not in today. Um, I don't really know why he is saying like, we don't have a job scope because we walked the, the center. Um, and they even developed a plan that identified all the utilities, utility poles, the, um, uh, the transformers that are gonna have to go underground, basically what the project area is. Um, so I've asked him to, like, if there's any additional information to provide, um, I can easily provide it. I already sent him the excerpt of the Upton, uh, center tip project, basically going from, uh, Country Super to the convenience, I mean, to the community center so that they can see all of those sheets, including, um, the, the five poles that need to be relocated in the area. And National Risk Responsible, we haven't even heard from, from Mastod yet. So I'm trying to navigate the communication through that and, um, these two things, while they get at the aesthetic in the center, they are really disconnected because of, one puts all that infrastructure below the ground, but then this reintroduces streetscape and other, uh, pedestrian. That really is all surface level. So understanding the controversy, I think, was partly, um, finance committee jumping the boat on a motion that should have been select boards. There, the issues that they had raised were on that the request wasn't based on any sort of identified scope, what is a proposed budget and what's the long-term viability versus at least for this, we have that and we'll get a second so that we can just cost compare and, and make sure that from a dollar perspective for us. This is, this is easier to.
I mean, I do get concerned that if we're, it's partly a capacity issue, right? Like we're trying to do a lot of things and we're not getting certain things done and we are getting other things done. So we're having to make a decision about prioritizing people's time and what they focus on. And if we just keep adding more things, things fall off. So we just have to be mindful. Joe can only do so much work and now we're gonna be adding more to his slate.
Well, I think too, the problem with National Grid and DOT is National Grid and DOT. I, I don't think they wanna give a straight answer or it's getting, we're getting, we're playing the bouncing ball everywhere. And I don't know, you know, they're so large. Who do you? Who do you even call?
Yeah, I mean, that's where.
Sold that house.
Brett and Meridian and.
Yeah, yeah, maybe, maybe we, we do because I'll tell you, I just sold the house in Worcester.
Well, just because they can help you that organization, because they know, they know the organization's better.
This house is five years old and everybody that's lived there, it's the wrong address. The meter is correct, but it does not match the address and, uh, they're all getting their electricity and they're like, oh, well, guess what? You're buying it, but it's the wrong address, but it's the right meter. So, yeah, maybe we reach out to Meridian and Fatman and say, yeah, like, cause it's September, they're back on, from vacation.
The window's gonna close.
Say, we, we didn't answer.
That's, that's what I, yeah.
Right. So where are we now?
We haven't heard any more about the seventy-five percent decline meeting yet either.
That's not gonna, they're not gonna be hitting that until the end of the year.
Okay, and you know they're only at twenty-five.
They're probably at like third.
Yes.
And there's not a benchmark for thirty.
No.
And, and have we said of any type of a meeting, um, concerning the parking lot and because we are losing parking where the old telephone building was?
That's, that's what is a work in progress with them because they don't have any sort of schematic. That on their radar, they have it on that, that they're looking into it, but they also said that seventy-five percent was gonna be the end of the summer. Now they're saying end of the year.
How come?
No, I reached out to the project manager and said, these were explicit issues that we wanted to see and be able to have conversations on.
Yeah, I don't wanna hear, you know, what, I don't wanna hear that all of a sudden you're a hundred percent so donkey up and maybe something like this.
No.
You know, they keep kicking it down the road. That's, that's my concern. I don't wanna hear that.
Yeah.
I don't want them to come up in November and say, oh, guess what we did?
Yeah. No, not there.
One oh nine there in Bedway or, yeah, I think it was Bedway. They waited eight years, seventy-five percent. It was, it was money was going to the cities.
Yeah. So after that one, we have um, the abandonment of Stoddard.
Yep.
Uh, so, uh, coming in at article ten, article eleven is changing cemetery commission from elected to appointed. Um, both ten and eleven, uh, uh, town council, uh, has provided essentially what are their final comments? Um, so this is ready to press. Article twelve, uh, and, uh, Brian Mazer and I have a telephone call tomorrow to discuss this, uh, is, uh, petitioning the general court to amend the Town Manager Act, uh, based on the recommendations, uh, from the Town Manager Act Review Committee. Uh, that's one where the review committee had recommended and they provided a, a recommended rewrite, um, reformatting, uh, adding in some correct, uh, some uh, uh, clarifying, uh, verbiage, um, uh, to the new one, not to the old one to help sort of explain things a little bit more and, and really restructure that act as well as most significantly for uh, elected boards, their recommendation that, uh, elected staff of elected board members of report to the town manager. Um, uh, and that's where we discussed creating some sort of memorandum of agreement between select board and elected boards to identify how that works because as staff comes in and as the organization continues to change, we could more easily amend memorandums of agreement uh, versus going back to the legislature to, um, make changes to that.
Can I ask you, did you, were you provided with the, what they had changed and what was there before so that you could tell? Remember you had requested from Joe to ask the.
Yeah, I know, I know they made some changes. Um, I did ask at one point, you know, specifically just to highlight, like, this was changed to that. Yeah.
Um, I'm sorry if, if I missed that because it's totally reorganized. There's not like a red line version. I have the word version that I didn't send to the board. It's.
I know Steve wrote it. Don't even look like it's a change.
A lot of it doesn't look different.
No, they, they put in, they grouped things together because before you'd have procurement here and then something else contract down here.
Rearrange the.
Right.
Things were.
Yeah.
I could call Steve for a couple of ten, right, and say, hey, can you just kinda walk me through this?
Yes.
I, I didn't see many, but people have come up to me and said, what have you changed? And I'm like, like, there are people have asked me specifics and I don't have specifics.
Yeah.
So I can answer those people's questions.
And then anything after that is potentially zoning changes.
Okay.
And if there's any other, um, articles that, uh, come in by Friday, there's one I'm anticipating from, uh, Chief Marchand, uh, back in two thousand and eighteen, the town had appropriated five hundred thousand dollars to redo the roof at the fire station.
Yes.
There's forty-five thousand dollars left. Um, he would like to use a portion of that, basically just under twenty-seven thousand. Um, if you're, you've been in the main lobby, all the tile is starting to come up. Um, the, um, what they received for feedback from the flooring company was that it's the light and the UV rays that are coming in that basically are popping up. It's, it's like a laminate, like the vinyl tile, it's popping all that up. Um, but Chief Martian said it's also damaging the, um, antique fire engine. They got a quote to put up, um, UV, uh, film on glass.
Mm-hmm.
And then, um, which was like only six thousand, but the remaining amount, um, seventeen thousand was to redo the flooring and the whole foyer area by repurposing, um, a, essentially improvements to the fire station from an article where we have leftover funds back into it. It does require town meeting approval, otherwise he's submitting it as a regular funding request and then we just let that revert to town, uh, free cash and then appropriate later in some ways, that's a look. That's also streamlined to say, you, town meeting, you appropriated this to improve it. We did the project, we're taking some of this to do other improvements. Um, so he may be submitting that by the end of the week, uh, to use those funds. Cause he asked, well, if it's, if it's firm for repairing the fire station, can we just use it? No, that was specific. So you'd have to, um, you'd have to amend that article to us. Yeah. So that's the only other one that staff has been talking to.
What's the amendments for the accessory dwelling?
Uh, Mike thinks the planning board, so right now it's a, it's a special permit, but we said, um, accessory dwelling units at a maximum of like twelve hundred square feet. The new state law sets by right nine hundred square feet, so they may just, um, remove that, um, square foot trigger for special permit. They may keep that in. He said some of the members wanna keep, want to make some changes to reflect the new legislation that's coming in. Otherwise you have, um, a question on whether or not the whole accessory dwelling unit, uh, by law that we have, whether or not it all goes away and potentially opens things up. So he has planned where members that wanna make some quick changes to make it a little bit more palatable if all sudden we have to make, uh, all these units by right.
Yeah, that's probably a legal question as well because my understanding of it is it's by right.
But it can be by site plan review.
If it's more than one.
Under, because site plan is by right, but it allows local control. That's what some towns are looking at doing as an intermediate step because you don't know where they're getting access. Is it a new curb cut? Um, where is it in relation to, um, SAD or other infrastructure? So some towns are looking at doing that themselves and they wanna at least talk about it. I think it's coming up at their next meeting, so.
Yeah, I don't think anybody knows how it's all gonna shake out yet, but.
No. And it's also the.
Deflation.
It's the timing because it's then in January that it's effective. It, it doesn't line up with any town's, um, regulatory process for special town meeting in fall or in annual town meetings.
So that's my job. So we've been looking at it closely.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. So.
So I had it as, um, and, um, realistically, I'm, for, for the purposes of the warrant, I'm able to identify, like, having these articles on the board is also. I'm able to identify, like, having these articles on the board is also, uh, able to, uh, vote to put some of these on. So I had a, um, proposed motion that identified specific, uh, articles. You, this is your warrant. So in the end, once everything's compiled, you're voting whether to keep it on or not. So. So really it's up to, up to the board. You can either vote to put these on or I put them on and then you're reviewing them all together and you can decide, no, yes, these are good.
I don't see anything concerning.
No. Okay, okay. So do you need a motion?
No, we don't need them. Just checking.
Um. Uh, select board meeting schedule.
So when we last met, we talked a lot about schedule and workshops, but we never voted to set the schedule for the remaining of twenty twenty four.
Okay.
I move that the board vote to schedule regular meetings from October first, fifteenth, twenty ninth, November nineteenth, December third, and seventeenth, twenty twenty four.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
unanimous. And then amend the technology committee charge and membership.
Yeah, so the technology committee has been seven, but they've had a challenge maintaining members. They have a, uh, a core of three that always attend, and then it's the remaining two, they've had a challenge. So there's been many meetings where they've, um, not been able to have form, especially over the summer. They just had someone, uh, resign. Uh, so, um, Steve thought, hey, it's, and they have one vacancy current. So, um, Steve, uh, Racketon, who's chair, thought this may be a good opportunity to reduce it down to five. Because now we have this working relationship with Men and Up and Green School District, their, their charge really pivots to be more advisory to staff, Men and Up and Regional School District, as well as the select board. So, um, uh, Joe's, Joe Lake, you the technology director for Men and Up and Green School District, uh, has reviewed and he supports it. I support it. Uh, but this is a committee that was set up by the select board. Um, and originally under the, the mission, it was specifically to assist the assistant to the town, town manager. Um, so now it's just rewritten to, um, basically, uh, refer to town manager, select board, um, town ID tomorrow.
Questions?
No.
I'm good with it. Do I hear a motion?
I move that the board vote to decrease the technology committee charge to advisory to town manager and decrease the committee from seven members to five and to amend the mission statement of the committee to be read as proposed.
I second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
unanimous. We are not gonna approve minutes because I didn't see any, right? But yeah.
In the bracket.
Yeah, I'm sure it's a package.
All right, Laura must say. Sorry, Laura had a brain fart today. When you're scrolling through a hundred and thirty five pages, apparently I missed that.
And I. There's four, there were four appendices that were within the report. So you didn't even see all of the reports from Dallas. I gave you the, the high levels.
Okay, I, I didn't.
You read it? I can read it real quick, yeah.
Okay.
If you guys will give me.
Some six pages.
Yeah, I read fast.
Never mind the punctuation.
I'm giving it up. Give me a break. You see me twitch, you know, I saw something.
Get them.
Love that.
Get us this stuff. You did, your eyes lit up like a little kid.
Binder, I'm like, ooh.
It apparently is better than crayons.
Mm-hmm, exactly. Yeah, it comes, tells us that Bridge Designs finally, doesn't bring me pictures, like, come on, rookie. It's like, I did not want.
We now know Brett's a visual learner.
Yeah.
You didn't even see me twitch. Okay, wait. It, it, it is a visceral reaction. I can't help it. Um, so do I hear a motion to accept the minutes?
I make a motion to approve the minutes of August twentieth, twenty twenty four.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
unanimous.
Nice shot.
I don't, yeah. Okay, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I move that we adjourn the meeting.
Second.
All in favor? Meeting adjourned at eight twenty six. Thank you.